Starting off, tell us a little bit about how long you've been a Tip City School Board member.
Uh, I joined in January of twenty twenty.
What made you want to run?
Several things. I wanted to bring best practice into the district in terms of decision making. Uh, not based on politics and and acquaintances. I wanted to try to really stick with policy. And um, principles and. I knew in my heart that I would be a very fair minded. And broad minded person for every student in the district. Because of my travels, because I've been around the world, because I've. You know, lived in another country, because I've been to the mid east, because of my. Um, generation of of women having to. Secure so many things, you know, like being able to return to the workplace after pregnancy. That was never guaranteed before the seventies. Uh, the Civil Rights Act of sixty four, I lived through that. I watched it on the black and white TV. These are very. Indelible memories that I have. I lived through an amazing period of the seventies, so many. So Title Nine, um, EEO enforceability. So, so I wanted to bring that and, you know, just being an an older person on the board.
Yeah.
And having raised my kids through the, all three through the school system.
Yeah, are you from Tip City?
No.
No, what brought you to the area? Where are you from originally?
Job, a job in the airport.
Nice, so where are you from originally?
Uh, a town south of Lancaster.
Okay.
Columbus, excuse me.
Nice, nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice. And so what did you love most about being a school board member? Since you've done it since twenty twenty, that is a long time, right?
I'm in my final term. Um, I think just learning new things. You learn a lot of new things if you're an engaged member. You know, what I learned here is that you can just show up and take votes. And put minimal stress on yourself, minimal effort. And it 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 you can get by with that. But that doesn't mean it's the right thing or the right way. And so what I really liked was getting engaged and. And uh, knowing, knowing the issues that I was going to go to the meeting for and have a vote or have input into. Um, not just get there and wing it. Cause I'm not a wing it kind of person.
Did you plan on, so your term was about to come to an end? When was it going to end?
It it'll be finished the end of December this year.
Or do you plan on running again? Do you?
Not now, no, I s- I wanna do some other things.
Okay, so you already were done with, you know, you already knew that this would be your last term.
Well, I didn't really know that until um, you know, just a short time ago.
What's a short time ago? A few days ago, a few months ago?
A month ago, maybe I was, you know, thinking about because the 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 deadline to fill out your paperwork for the next term. So.
So what went into that decision when you were deciding, you know, I know you talked about loving it so much. Learning something new, going to the meetings and not winging it and putting your all into it, right? So what was that like making the decision to, you know, not return as a school board member?
Well, uh. It's okay because you know, I've I've done a lot of things over the years. I've worn different hats. And so um, there's something that interests me that I would like to do after this and that's look at. Some of the legislation around the removal of board members. Um, some of the sta- the statutory language and how to improve that to make it work for all parties. You know, so when you remove a board member in Ohio, it's not a recall, it's a removal process and it's under a special statutory language. And um. It's important, I think it's a really good, good statute, because if you have rotten apples in a barrel, the citizens should have a right. To try and remove those. And it may be something one day I would, you know, support for for someone, a a public official such as a board member. But it's also gotta be worked the other way so that if it's not a rotten apple, that gets proved quickly. So that the public can have uh, restill, restill competence in the, in the. In the public's trust of that official. And that didn't happen in in our situation. This whole removal process went on for over a year. And so I think that can be um, through some improvements with with the legislation that can. We need to improve that in Ohio.
Yeah, and we talk about the removal process, the removal process for which board member, when you're saying it's taken a year.
Uh, there was a, there was an effort for myself and and another board member, Teresa Dunaway.
And you and Teresa Dunaway, I know you guys are um, you guys are. Could I say friends? Or is that a wrong? Yeah, yeah, I can tell from the board meetings.
I mean, yeah, we've been.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you feel like you're friends with any other members on the board?
I feel friendly to other board members, yes.
But they're not your friends. It's a difference.
Well, I don't know really. How you, you know, go into to defining all that.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, this is to me not what you do. You don't go in this because of friendship. You go on the board because you wanna serve.
And I understand that, but after a while of working with some people, you do develop some relationships and friendships.
Yes, you do.
And that's why I say you and Teresa Dunaway are friends, right? And you said, yeah. And I said, are you friends with any other other board members? And you say, I'm friendly with them. So there is a distinction, there is a difference. You don't go into every situation making friends, but if you do, that's great, right? So you made a friend on the board, right? Would you say she's an ally of yours?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, being a part of the board and trying to get this. Things through, I wanna give you an opportunity to talk about some of the things you feel like you accomplished during your term. You know, cause I don't wanna just jump into the other stuff right away.
I understand.
I wanna give you an opportunity to explain that, cause I know that's something that we talked about.
We had, our board and starting in twenty twenty accomplished amazing things. One of the first things we did is we added an extra citizen comment to the agenda for the regular meetings so that. Uh, prior to that, it was one citizen comment at the beginning of the meeting and that was it. Sometimes people can't get off work in time, or sometimes they come to the meeting with no intention to comment, but then they're sitting there thinking. Okay, I think I wanna get up and speak now, you know, this piqued my interest. So we have now citizen comment at the beginning of the agenda and then also another one at the end of the agenda. Wasn't rocket science? Yeah, we voted, got the majority and added that. I'm kind of stunned that it wasn't done. Far before for before twenty twenty. It's inclusion. It it affords more opportunity to be heard. Um, we also um. The first board to have live streaming of our meetings. So YouTube. So you come home, you don't wanna go to the board, you can turn on and watch it live. Um, prior to that, you had to go on a. Program called Kit TV and look for the date and sometimes the tape was up, sometimes it was late and. So this is again transparency and it's not hiding. Um. We do that for the work session and the regular session. So if you mess up, it's right there. If you're doing, you know, it's real time. Um, transparency, I think, I think it's the way to go. We have, we initially decreased our our for our full time classified staff from ten years for three weeks vacation to six. To make our district more competitive. Um, I would have liked to maybe even seen it go down to five years. You know, and then have the the three weeks. Um, we reduced, we we put in alignment the um. Oh, the the healthcare benefits eighty twenty plan, eighty pays, the the district pays eighty, the the employee pays twenty. We matched that for our administrators with our teachers, so it's that way across the board. Um, we ended unlimited banking of vacation days for administrators because it wasn't. It shouldn't be designed as an investment tool. So. If you roll over your vacation days a little bit every year, you could have a sizable number in twenty years. And get paid out in current salary dollars. So that we stopped, we only allow five vacation days rolled over now for the administrators. Um, most companies, I think, use it or lose it. It's not meant to be, uh, you know, an investment option. Gosh, wish I had.
Done a lot.
No, we've, we've done more. I I, you know, I need to 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 think a little bit more about, we changed several of our policies. Um. We had very supportive when we, when we renewed the teacher bargaining contract. There was a kiosk where I guess the teachers had to put in. A a a menu of why they had a personal day. And I'm like, well, personal's personal. You know, why are we ha- if it's, don't call it personal then, you know, so we ended that, that, that list for the. On the kiosks, it's just personal.
Yeah, so safe to say you've done a lot during your time, a lot, even more than what you've just explained to us. You've invested a lot of time, exactly, you've done a lot.
We had, well, and then we kept our schools open during COVID. COVID hit in March of twenty twenty. And the governor shut everything down. And so this was major because nobody had been through this before. So we had a new superintendent. Oh, by the way, we hired a new super superintendent in twenty twenty. So we did all the interviewing for that. And um, through the, through the COVID twenty twenty up until the fall. When some of the mandates were lifted, we wanted our school buildings open. And we wanted the parents to have a choice between sending their child to school. Or doing online learning. So we endorsed that and embraced that. Gosh. So, oh, oh, another thing that we did, this was a big over at the recommendation, I think we were all on board for this. We had a superintendent and assistant superintendent. And we eliminated the super, the assistant superintendent position. And instead ma- and this was also at the recommendation of the assistant superintendent at the time before he left. So we had his blessings and I think it was a good, very good plan. Eliminate the assistant superintendent and then. Parlay that into three prongs, a director of human resources, cause we didn't have one. Director of curriculum, we didn't have one. And also a director of special education, exceptional children, cause we didn't have one. These are really big events that happened, you know, just in four, four years. So.
Yeah, you've invested a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of good work that you've done for the district, right? And I know you can go on and on and on. Speaking to how much you care and, you know, it's, this is a passion of yours.
Well, I think that it really speaks very loudly to this false narrative that we've been so dysfunctional. See, we were functioning. We may have dysfunctionality among a member or so, but the actual functioning of the board was in place. You can't accomplish. Accomplish all those things if you're not, if you're dysfunctional. I mean, think about this, Mamie, we com- we accomplished more. In functionality, especially during the COVID period and the year after, than other boards who didn't even have that to deal with. That's not dysfunctionality. That doesn't mean you might not have moments of dysfunctionality, but you know. It's, it's like, it's like arrhythmia of the heart. If the heart is beating, you don't have arrhythmia.
Yeah. And I get what you're saying, but do you think some of the dysfunctionality? Maybe may have overshadowed some of the work the board was doing.
I think it completely overshadowed the work of the board. I think it became very personal and political and very gossipy and very bait clicking on social media. And I think some of that was driven at the time because of the frustration with COVID, people being. You know, the uncertainty, people being closed up. Um, you know, you hear this throughout the whole country. I mean, none of us had been through it before and so. Yes, I do think a lot of accomplishments have been completely dismissed and overshadowed.
Do you think you could have accomplished more if you all weren't so dysfunctional?
Absolutely. I'd still like to accomplish more.
Do you perhaps think you as well contributed to the dysfunctionality of it all?
I think that uh, I reacted. I wasn't the, I wasn't the antagonist. There is a difference between. Proactive behavior and reactive behavior. And I think that I was i- in reactive mode. Because when something gets thrown at you constantly, you know, you may, you may ignore it at first, but when you you keep, you get defensive. And you, and you wanna stand up for yourself. That's human nature. That's how we've made advances. Uh, that was my generation.
Is that why what happened yesterday happened? Cause I wanna give you a chance to explain that to people.
What happened yesterday was a culmination of of four years of being badgered and bullied. And misrepresented and um, yeah.
What was the point of the Nazi symbol in the phrase? What were you trying to get across?
Nazi, okay, so it was, it was uh, it was a gesture that in Germany at the time meant. Total obedience to a dictator. And I felt yesterday that's what this particular board member. Who's been doing this for some time, w- w- was, was expecting and demanding. It's really disheartening that everything gets thrown on me, you know, and being a board president is a big role. And one of the, the most important things you can do as a board president. Is to create that impartiality with Robert's rules. So there's, there's always a sense of inclusion. And it does say in the rulebook, even when you feel frustrated as the president, you. Should try to, you know, put that in check. And for four years, um. This board member has been antagonistic. Just stirred up a lot of trouble in this community and and false narratives and. Just got tired of it. Bullying and the, a- a- and this total obedience and the, and the comments that were being made, you know. I'm talking, do not interrupt me. Well, I wasn't interrupting him. I didn't utter one word. I may have made a sigh of a noise, do not make any noises or I will. What? You know, that threatening, cause we've, I've had that already in in executive sessions that people don't know about. And being called expletives. It's just, it's just very, very um. You just can't, you just don't understand it till you go through it.
Yeah. Was, was yesterday your breaking point? Is that why you did what you did? The gesture and then the phrase that followed?
I think it just, yeah, I think that a lot of it was, I just had enough. I totally had enough, four years of it.
Yeah, and I know in the beginning of this, we talked about your travels, right? You being well versed, right? You uh, being very worldly, right?
Well, I guess that's a matter of definition, but matter of perspective.
Yes, but from how you explained it to me, right? That's just what I'm going on, right? From that, from those experiences, right? One can make the argument that because of those experience that you did have, that yesterday your actions were not justifiable. Even though this is how you may feel. What do you wanna say in response to that? I just wanna give you an, cause they are, they are going to be people who are thinking that. They are thinking to themselves. People are thinking to themselves, you could have responded any other way. But why that way?
And for four years, I mean, you know. When you're undressed publicly over and over, it starts to wear on you. And that's the difference between proactive and reactive. And just, you know, in April, this, this uh, Mr. Pattry censured me for, for no good cause. You know, I had the right to speak at Robert's rules. And there is a first motion, a second motion, and then, you know, it goes down the chain. Everybody has a right, that's your board seat right to participate in that discussion. Mine was taken away from me. And when I tried to defend that censor, that's not the purpose of a censure for that.
Right.
And as far as being handled differently, Mamie, you know, it's interesting that you, that you look at it from that perspective.
I would like. No, I don't look at it from that perspective.
Okay, I would like, I would like to look at it from this perspective.
Okay.
Rather than my gesturing, what about his gesturing? Four years of this when a board talks or like this, the slumping over like, oh my god, I can't, you know, it's, we gotta tolerate her again. Them again. Um, you know, that's microaggression and that's body language I haven't seen in a very long time. And I've been around, you know, me, and I just, I've never seen that level of dismissive body language. Um, that's just one example. And then the, the, the tone and the yelling and the name calling and the. And and, you know, the, the condensation, like I was a little girl.
And I know you're getting emotional just explaining it, right? And I don't want you to feel like I'm saying you don't have a right to feel this way, right? I want to disconnect a little bit, right? I want you, I wanna give you the, the picture here, right? Yes, there is Simon and there is this relationship that you and Simon have had over the past few years while you guys have been on this board, right?
Other board members too, not just me and Simon.
But right now, we are talking about you and Simon, right? We're not talking about anyone else at this time, right? So there's you and Simon and there's this relationship you all have had over the past few years, right? And then there's also your relationship with people in the community who voted for you, who have faith in you, who respect you, right?
Yes.
So when I say to you, right, what do you want to say, when I say to you, what do you say in response to people who say? You could have responded any other way, but that was not the way to do it. I'm not talking about Simon. I want you to speak to the people who voted for you, the people who show up to those board meetings because they believe in you, the people who have respect for you. That's all I'm saying. So I think we need to. Um, we need to separate the thi- separate things, right?
Answer that.
I hear what you're saying about Simon, right? That you have a right to feel that way. I don't, I'm not saying any, I mean, my, my job is to just ask the questions here, right? But what do you say to people who say you could have responded any other way, especially in this political climate, right? That is so racially charged. People are saying you could have responded any other way.
I wanna, I'm just curious, how is that racially charged?
People, people believe as though when they talk about, you know, the Nazis and Germany and what happened there, they just felt like. The salute, and again, this is people, not me, right? They feel like that was not the right way to go about it, right? However you may have felt in that moment, you could have said anything to Simon, right? They feel that's not how you should have responded to him.
Now you've asked me two things, Mamie, so let me respond.
Okay, no, definitely.
The people that support me, a lot of them are, are, th- they say, I don't know how you took it this long. I don't know how you, how you tolerated things this long with the grace and dignity. That we have and that I have. So they've been my strength. As far as being racially charged, you know, we, when you start getting into these dictatorial type modes. And expectations of peoples, particularly on a public board of servant hood, that is very scary. That needs to be pushed back and safeguarded against. Because, you know, our freedom i- i- is really good to speak and. And to have somebody be so derogative and dismissive and willing to shut you down and and try to. Put a power of censure on you is concerning. And so I don't see this so much as a racially charged issue. I see it as a bullying, brainwashing. Control issue, which is what a lot of that was about in Germany. Um, and.
Are you saying, I just wanna clarify this, are you saying that Simon created an environment that was almost like?
It's a dictator.
A dictatorship like what happened in Germany with the Nazis.
Saying that, because that dictatorship in Germany went way. Be, you know, into, into other, uh, into other avenues. But I'm seeing a dictator, he's one of the most famous dictators, but any type of dictatorial. Position or authority or role is, should concern us as Americans.
Yeah, and being so, being that Hitler was such a polarizing dictator, right? In many circles, you don't bring up Hitler and people say, oh my god, they're giving him applause. People are not doing that, right? So when people, when people think of what happened yesterday, they feel, okay, you may have been frustrated. But you could have said something else. You could have responded in a different way. That's all I'm saying to you. My, my job is to bring to you. The concerns of the citizens in this district, right? Not Simon's, because again, we are not talking about Simon, right? While you and him may have had the conflict, but for some people, like again, they believe it was racially charged. You have some people calling for your resignation. What do you want to say to those people?
For, for me, I am not a, a, I'm not a discriminating person. Oh my gosh. I've been so open and I'm so comfortable with different races and cultures and religions and. Um, you know, I've been through parts of the mid east that might make some people, especially women, very uncomfortable. I mean, I've been around and so that just doesn't even like resonate with me, okay? I mean. And we all have implicit biases, what, by the way. We, we all do, okay? And we need to work on those, those, that implicit bias, whatever. Wherever and whatever that may be. But my gesture yesterday was. A reaction, it was symbolic and a sarcastic gesture of submission to a board officer acting like a dictator. That's it. And if he hadn't been acting like such a dictator for so long, that wouldn't have happened.
Do you regret it at all, get, following the public outrage?
I. I can't really, I don't really know how I feel about that because, you see, part of what I think w- we need to do is. And being an elder.
Don't, I'm sorry, I don't wanna cut you off. You can't, it's gonna.
Okay, so I think that it's an interesting question. It has created a lot of controversy and so the easy way would not, would be not to have that controversy. The easy thing would be is to, you know, as if that, to not react. But it was a genuine, honest reaction. Um, like I said, you know. When oppression hits people, after so long, they react. Sometimes it's not always the best reaction. You know, my son was in uh, LA during the, the George Floyd riots. He lost one of his jobs because the whole mall was burned down. Um, I have some videos that were taken there. We, sometimes we get through, we get to places of improvement because we get pushed into those. Into those areas and we react. And that reaction sometimes gets the attention that it needs.
And it's getting attention and the attention is calling for your resignation. Is that what you want? You talk, talk to me about so much about, you know, all you've accomplished and you've accomplished a lot. It seems, you are very passionate. I can feel it from sitting here on the other side of you, right? But it's almost like there are people that are watching this that are wondering, damn, not damn, but could she please not double down on this?
Well, then that's, that's, they're, they're entitled to think that way. They haven't walked in my shoes. They don't know what I have been through for four years. They don't know, uh, you know, their reputation hasn't been unfairly impugned. Their daughter's senior year wasn't unfairly tainted. You know, when, when you walk in other people's shoes, you, you maybe start having a little different perspective of things. And I have been so classy, if you will, and so trying to be professional, not turning to the Facebook pages and not. You know, getting on there to, to blast and tell my side, just sort of kept a stiff upper lip and kept going. With my, my commitment to governance. But yeah, it can, it can take its toll.
Yeah, when you saw that he resigned, what went through your mind?
Well, I didn't know it was gonna happen. I had no clue whatsoever.
Yeah, I don't think anyone did.
Well, I, I can't speak to that. I can just speak to myself.
My, I, what I'm asking is just what was your reaction to it when you saw it? Cause I mean, I don't think, nobody knew. I don't, he didn't even know until later on. I spoke with Simon.
I, you know, because here it is, the September, we have one meeting left in September. And I think maybe one meeting in October, or excuse me, two in October, one in November, maybe one in December. Because of the holidays. So we're so, we're so close to the end, you know, of the term, cause he's on the same term that I'm, that I'm on. I didn't really, you know, think that much. Sometimes I, I wondered why, you know, maybe he didn't resign sooner because he's made it very clear at times, he's very unhappy with being a board member.
The decorum among the board. As a whole, right? And everything that has transpired over the past few years and. Do you feel like there was a lack of unprofessionalism?
Many times.
Do you feel like you contributed to that as well?
Think I reacted to it. So yes, I guess that would be a contribution, cause I reacted to it.
Yeah. What do you wanna say to the parents in the district who feel like they've been let down?
To the ones that feel like they've been let down, I'm sorry that they feel that way. Um, I am not a discriminatory person. That was meant in no way, shape or form as some racial gesture, not at all. It was meant to say, you're acting like a dictator right now. A total idiotic dictator. And I've had enough. Four years of you just constantly, you know, badgering and this and that, and I, I just had enough.
Yeah, cause you're explaining to me that you feel like he's been, you know, sexist, you feel like he's been misogynistic, right? You feel like these are all things that you've dealt with, uh, you know, sexism, uh, you know.
Well, it's more than that, Mamie. I mean, he, Mr. Pattry is an attorney and attorneys know. Or should know, and I'm sure he does, that their words carry more weight than a non attorney. Member, okay? I mean, that's just the way it is, with, with, wherever they serve. And so. And so with that more weight, you need to be more cautious and careful and selective with what you're charging and alligating towards people. And so I find it just appalling that in our first year, this attorney board member makes all these claims of, of violating policies and state laws and violating, you know, the bylaws. Wow. And, and there's other ways to do that. If you really believe that happened, you know, your duty to work as a board, I've worked on teams. Teamwork is very, very familiar to me. And so to take your team down like that very publicly to me is, is pretty self-serving. And, and I'm, and I'm really surprised. And I've had people tell me that, 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 you know, you, you, he should have, I think, been a lot more restraint with his allegations, particularly as an, as an attorney member on the board.
Yeah.
Not that he's the board's attorney, but he's, happens to be an attorney and serving on the board.
Yeah.
I've never seen that in any of our other attorneys that, that live in, that have served on our board in Tip City. We've had quite a few. I've never seen them make these type of allegations against their own board and create a five-page document, censure document, saying that all this wrongdoing is going on.
Yeah, I mean, I know you also told me on the phone, you felt like, you know, it's not just, you, you know, being misogynistic, being sexist, cutting people off, but you know, the cutting people off thing, I've seen from my own experience, being at those board meetings and watching them, everyone's done it to each other, right? Being racist, sexist, misogynistic. Do you feel like if he would have stayed on, there was going to be any way to just move forward? Or, because it just, yeah.
So what? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Do you think, do you think had he stayed on the board, next year, things would have been different or?
You mean if he'd run for another term?
And you were still on it, yeah.
If we'd both been reelected, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Would things have been different?
Yes.
I don't know.
Did you, do you feel like you guys needed to sit down and have a conversation beforehand? Like, did you and him do anything outside of being school board members? Do you think? Do you think that?
I didn't do anything with any of the board members outside of being a school board member.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, yeah. We don't, we don't socialize even, you'd mentioned the other board. We don't shop or vacation or, no.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, and I want to say something, Mamie, this is really important and it's been brought to my attention many times and you, you maybe can attest to this. When you come to the meeting and actually sit there, you get a different sense of the meeting than when you're watching it on the YouTube. I cannot tell you how many times people have said that. It's like, wow. You're, you know, it's very different being here at the meeting and seeing this and hearing it and watching and being so close versus when it's just playing on YouTube and you're more removed. The affronts are a little bit more apparent when you're at the meeting.
Yeah. Well, I want to give you an opportunity to say anything else you want to say, that you feel like you want people to know. I think we've covered it all already, but I, I want to give you an opportunity now to, you know, say anything.
Well, sitting next to Mr. Patry when he was really just so dictatorial, do not interrupt me, I'm talking. Do not make any noises or I will, you know, I wasn't sure what he was alluding to. What, what, when I will what? Was he going to say I will censor you? You know, was he ready to like smack me or, or, I mean, it was kind of scary and I've been in these situations before.
Were you afraid?
I, apprehensive. Not really knowing what the next move is going to be, because I've seen some very, what I think are erratic things.
What do you mean? Like in terms of physical violence? Because I've never, I, maybe we're missing something. Has that been a thing at your meetings?
No, no.
Seen that.
But the, but the, but the, the, the expletives, the name calling, particularly in executive session, walking out, just some very kind of hot-headed behavior.
Yeah, have you reached out to the state school board at all?
For what?
During your term to make a complaint, to talk about what's happening, to talk about, you know, how you feel and not about, it's not about everybody else, but in terms of how you have felt, right? Because sitting here with you right now, you're explaining to me a lot of things that we don't get to see, right?
No, you don't.
We only see the school board meetings online or where they're at the school board. So did you take any steps throughout this, throughout your term to like reach out to someone from the state and say this is what's going on?
Not necessarily from the state. But a lot of things, though, you will learn with school boards are sort of so self-governing that they have to be solved internally. Or that's where you really start to try to solve that. And that's where conflict can come into play because you have, you know, you may have a majority the first two years and then the second year, you may be in that minority group for voting for that. So it, it's a lot of dynamics.
Yeah. Well, I think I'm done here, but again, if you have anything else you want to add, you can add it before we.
Well, I feel that Mr., you know, there, there keeps to be an emphasis on what I did. I, I just hope that people that understand what I'm saying, you know, you know, I've been demonized and, and yet I feel like I'm the one who's been the victim for four years. And I'm the one who's kind of like had it. And, 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 you know, it was a real raw moment. And I'm sorry that people are misinterpreting that or thinking that it's racial, because it's, to me, it's not racial. I'm really not a discriminatory person. I think I'm very open-minded. But I also believe in standing up for yourself. And it just, it just hit a breaking point. Mamie, that's all I can tell you, is I've really hit a breaking point after four years and I just feel that it was aggressive and that proactive aggression is very different than reactive aggression. Do you know what I mean?
No, I hear you.
It's a world of difference. And when you get into the psychology, that, you know, you'll, you'll make that distinction, was that a proactive aggress, aggression or was that a reactive? Because then you often deal with it very differently. And I don't consider myself an aggressive person at all, but I'm not, I'm just getting, you know, but I'm also from, from the, like I said, the sixty seventies and stand up and fight back. And I just, yeah, been through a lot in four years, unfairly criticized. Do you know how many people have, besides my, the people that support me, but the, the people that defend or, or against me or defend Mr. Pat? Do not people ever thank me or thank the Mrs. Dunaway or, do you know how many times they do that? No, do you know how much hate mail you get? Some really nasty things. I just got two of them today. These are, yeah.
Yeah, you just want people to understand that you, you were defending yourself.
Well, I'm defending myself.
Dealing with it for years.
I've been dealing with it for years and I'm human.
Yeah.
I'm human and I'm not a demon.
Yeah.
I've been demonized. And I've tried to stay out of the, out of the, all the electronic, you know, the Facebook stuff, because I don't think that's professional. But I'm coming to an end here and I'm probably going to put some boxing gloves on and punch back.